I will go ahead and call this meeting to order today, Monday, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty P M. The City of Bellevue Common Council Meeting. Reminder, please turn off all cell phones except for emergency personnel, so silent cell phones in City Hall. And if you are on Zoom, please silence yourself until you raise your hand and are called upon. Amy, will you do the roll call for me, please?
Mayor Gurdani.
Yes.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember David.
Yes.
Councilmember Open Office. Assistant.
Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero four within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall Post Office and on the city's website on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-five.
We move that the notice for the March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five City Council Meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four-two oh four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'm just gonna do this at the top of the meeting. We've got, um, item six, which is our presentation from Lang County Recreation District. Um, I received a new email from Mark Davidson earlier today that, um, I'll just read it to you. I am sorry to inform, due to some unforeseen circumstances, B C R D will need to postpone its presentation to the Bellevue City Council until a later date. We apologize for the inconvenience and look forward to presenting to the City Council soon. Just in case anyone was there for that presentation, just want to let you know that's canceled for this evening. And when we will reschedule, um, likely at the end of April, early May, um, we'll try and get them in here when, when we can, so. Moving on to item two, call for conflict, um, as outlined in Idaho Code seventy-four dash four zero four.
I have none.
I always feel like I have to think about that.
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you. Move on to item three, mayor and council report. Um, I'll get us started. I touched on a couple of these things in city news, um, our Bellevue newsletter that got sent out on Friday. Um, department head reports were submitted, um, earlier in this quarter. They were reviewed internally with the department heads. And myself and the community development director have started to put them into kind of a timeline of events for this year. Um, so you will be seeing a lot of that activity, that action happening, um, communicated from within City Hall, showing up on agendas. Um, one of them, you're seeing tonight, so, um, I was really impressed with our department head work plans and look forward to supporting them and implementing um, those goals throughout this year. Um, Cassell has been, um, a big transition that our treasurer Shelley Shoemaker has been heading up. Um, and we are starting to see the end of that transition happening. Um, we have, uh, transitioned our books for March to fully function at a Cassell. And, um, how will that affect the community? Uh, moving forward, we will, this week, get communication out to the public about, um, how sewer and water bills will be done um, through the Cassell, uh, A C H program and also using Express Bill Pay, which was a, uh, purchase or payment system that we had approved at a previous council meeting. Um, so you will be receiving communication from, um, Shelley and our other deputy clerk about that transition and how, how it will affect your billing process. So expect to see communication this week. Um, a couple of updates, we're in our newsletter for Public Works. We're making progress on, uh, our effort to bring our wastewater facility back online. We have electricians in there that are working under our I C R I P, um, the approval of the funds for our I C R I P um, insurance claim. So once those electricians finish, um, and get in some of the, the products that we approved purchasing at the last city council meeting, uh, we should see, you know, another update from our Public Works Department of what the next steps are. And a reminder that we are bringing the wastewater plant, uh, back online to the way it was engineered and built, uh, previous to it going down. So that update and then, um, a little bit on water, um, I touched on this in a newsletter, in the newsletter. Um, we will be having a water project presentation and that will be on April fourteenth. Um, our next city council meeting, there's a bit of a weird three-week gap between these meetings. So, um, and that we will be hearing from, um, Merrick, who has been, um, our project manager, uh, on the water project. We'll be hearing from our public works department and then our internal legal as needed. So it's an opportunity to, um, have a presentation of information, uh, confirm for, for the council and the community of our D Q, D E Q compliance. Um, all the communications we've had to with D E Q up to date, um, going over some of the financial side of it. Uh, and, um, kind of looking at a new timeline, an updated timeline. Of course, there's been delays in the project and we can communicate about the delays and, uh, what the updated timeline should look like moving forward. Um, our project construction completion date has not, that mark has not changed with us internally or with D E Q. It's just some of the other highlights in between. So, um, we'll be talking about that on April, sorry, April fourteenth. I can't remember if I said that date right. Um, and I think that's kind of what I have to wrap up the mayor's update. Does the council?
That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
That seems like I make motions.
Thank you for accepting my long-winded mayor update. I just think that not all committee members are reading the newsletter currently, so I don't want to assume that that's the only source of information for our community. So I appreciate it. Anything from council?
I think you get big kudos for doing something that we haven't had in a year, which is bringing everybody up to date and having that, that type of meeting. So I know everybody's delighted, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's time, you know, a year's gone by. I think it's relevant.
Yeah, round numbers.
Yeah. Um, if there's nothing from the council, I think we'll go ahead and move on.
Can I just give one? Uh, I just, uh, you know, sometimes these guys are behind the scenes. And, uh, Amy, for one, has, um, jumped right into the new tools that have been made available with documents, with calendaring. And, um, the, and Kristen as well, and they're kind of off and running. So when you have new documents, when you have, uh, calendar events, um, they're shooting that stuff up there all the time. They also have a couple of documents about how to do it for other folks. And, um, I know we're scheduled to talk about more of, you know, how it goes, but yeah, they just kind of, like, before I ever even got the, the information out, they were already off and running. And there's, there's a bunch of new stuff up there to support what everybody's, you know, what the goal was.
And she's referencing the new, the new website, the backend.
Yeah, the new website and the documents that you can now see in the document library and for the, then calendar and the events and, you know, meetings and things. But these guys were doing it, you know, I was like, I would go in there thinking, oh, I better get some of these other things out there. No, they're already there.
Thank you to Suzanne, Amy and Kristen for kind of leading the charge and making that all happen.
Yeah, these guys are like, don't you need me?
Yeah, you're not going anywhere, just yet.
It's just, it was, it's pretty cool when you go and you're looking at something and like, I thought I was gonna upload that.
Yeah.
And it's like, no, there it is, because I do have a big repository of what was there before.
Yeah.
She's already got it up there, so.
Awesome.
Well, thank you, thanks.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah.
If we identify things, um, I mean, I sent a note, you know, to Amy the other day about something that wasn't urgent, but just in time. And, uh, are you, are you the person to communicate with about that, that kind of thing?
And Kristen.
Kristen, I think the council didn't really get a note, but Kristen.
Yeah, I've been waiting a little bit on the update just because we're still actively kind of working on that. But I would say, um, so Kristen is our, uh, community services manager. And so, um, her email is communitieservices@bellevueidaho.us, um, in regards to like website and communication tools. And then Amy would be the second contact there.
But fixes and things, absolutely.
That would be those two.
And you can even, you know, shoot it in through the website too. But yeah, for Kristen, everybody's keeping track of bugs and fixing them as we know about them or find them.
As we, yeah, before we kind of big, do the big reveal. So, yeah, please, yeah, please, any eyes always help.
Yeah, absolutely.
Websites are very dense and full of many pages to kind of focus on, so thank you. Okay, I will move on to public comment. This is for items of concern, not on the agenda. Um, I did receive one public comment online through the website. Um, and this is from Suzanne Reed. So I will read the comments for the record. Um, for the public record, I am submitting a copy of the email I sent to D E Q asking for assistance in determining the status of the drinking water project, specifically Bellevue compliance with the D E Q amended compliance agreement. The email seeks information using a compliance checklist of items consolidated from the amended compliance agreement. The goal is to verify resident understanding of the water project and our compliance obligations, as well as to receive status updates along with all supporting materials. A copy of the email and a copy of the compliance checklist are included with the public comment. So I have, Amy has received that to enter into public into record. Um, I've read that and thank you for the comment. And I think I addressed a little bit of the meaning, so maybe, uh, thank you. Any other comments for items of concern not on the agenda? Please state, yeah, state your name and your address.
Two, two brief things, um, just a, uh, citizen comment that the website looks really nice and clean and crisp. I haven't done a lot of exploring into it, but just the, kind of the front face of it looks real nice, so thank you for that. Um, the other part is a little less pleasant, um, the snow's melting from Memorial Park. And there is, I have a lot of dog feces in the park. And in years past, I've had a helium and pretty much picked that up. Um, and I just wonder, usually, um, the leaves are picked up or blown or blown or whatever happens. So last year that didn't happen for whatever reason. Um, so it's actually really hard to see it, um, because it's brown on brown. And I just wondered if there was a, a plan or a thought of how that will be addressed this spring and then perhaps.
Let me, yeah, thank you for that comment. I'll address it with the Public Works Department. And if you'd like a follow-up, I'm happy to follow up with you. Thank you.
I'll notice it.
Yeah. I know you're right there, so.
There is a, 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 a bag station over, okay.
Three, I think, now.
But those are awfully hard to use in the winter.
And then used frequently, I will say in the summertime, it's just, it's.
Yeah.
It's springs.
Long winter.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom, any public comment, any hands up that I'm not saying? Okay, then at this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
I was waiting for public, public.
Yeah.
I, Tammy Davis, three hundred South Street. But, um, next month, no, excuse me, May is Mental Health Awareness Month coming up. And I just was, I'd like to put it out there and, and see if we can get some things on the calendar and maybe acknowledge it. Here at the council level, we have, I do one for May and September. September is suicide prevention and awareness month, but that we could potentially read a, a resolution.
Yeah. So I would be.
Yeah.
Happy if you'd like to bring that.
I think we do one every year for that.
So I just was trying to, yeah, be on the record to ask.
Thank you. Yeah.
Last week of April, yeah, next month.
And you should send something to Kristen for the newsletter, I mean, then you can also.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
Yeah.
I'll make note and follow up again, yes. Okay, at this time, not seen other hands, I will go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda, we've got a handful of items in here. Approval of minutes, uh, approval of claims, treasurer's report, and then, um, an acknowledgement of the borough in your report. And, uh, two letters for authorization, uh, for the mayor to sign. So I think you're gonna go item by item. Item A, approval of minutes, um, any questions on that?
None.
I have just one comment. Um, I was absent, this is noted in bold there.
Shame, shame.
Um, but also, having been absent, there were a couple of references to my voting, um, one way or another on some action items. And so those should be removed. Um, I saw them in the other graph that they um, maybe just spell check, it seemed like I thought of two instances where there was a, a vote, um, that.
You may or may not.
Did not.
You don't recall.
Did not make there.
So let's, Amy can note those. And if you need, if you have the direct lines, feel free to send it over, but I'm sure she'll find it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
Any, um, questions on the approval claims slash big amounts to jump down to having Shelley talk a little bit about her treasurer's report and, and her hot back, however you guys want to do those two.
Uh, I just have one question and then back to your, and you can say, we're doing all this for the, um, April fourteenth meeting. But is there any report currently that is specific to the sewer project or the water project? I see them and I know they have groups. I was just curious if there were separate, like productions.
They would have to be requested to be pulled.
Okay.
As separate, but, but the way that Shelley is, um, correct and far wrong, they are, uh, itemized or categorized, you know.
I mean, I definitely see them, I just wasn't sure if there was something else. Okay, thank you.
Did everyone understand how to read the new claims report that you both in your packet?
Took me a second, then I was like, ah, what's happening?
And we're, just so you know, our reports are going to be work in cross, progress every single month. Um, trying to refine, it is very complicated systems compared to what we're used to having. So that's why I had to do a little, um, what do you call it? The, a code as to, um, what is admin, what is all of that? Because there was no way in the timeframe we had to try to put means on those numbers. It's very database driven. So we did do it by vendor and then also by department, but the department is by number, so.
That's why I was like, how come there's a whole chart? Then I figured that.
No questions on any of that?
No.
Thanks.
This is not maybe a question on the structure, but speaking of kind of vendor claims this month, and then I noticed previously that, uh, Bromley. Yes.
What page?
This is, I guess, on page fourteen, right? Invoice register.
McHugh Bromley, the attorney.
Yeah, McHugh Bromley, that there were, uh, kind of conjunctive management, uh, charges. And is there like a work product that they provide to the city that's available for the council, for council to see or that just a retainer? It gets paid every month, what exactly does that cost?
Is there a, um, line item for them on this for their water project work? Or is this the other work that they're doing with us?
When it isn't the water, I'm coding it in the water.
I want to make sure I'm referencing. So when they, they have been working with us, um, on the water project as water attorneys, that's then recorded and coded. So, um, and then the conjunctive management side, I would say the work product is the representation for the city of Bellevue, but there's nothing, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing they're producing af- after.
I don't know. What do they send you as far, do they send you?
We get a bill. That's all we get.
They don't itemize it or anything? There isn't anything on there?
It isn't, I mean, are you thinking under the conjunctive management category?
Yeah, that's how it was classified. It seemed like that was too large, fine, wow.
But is that a contract? Is that, is that a contract? So this, like, it's, that's a payment pursuant pay contract.
I think, um, we'd have to, we can drill down on that, but I'm pretty sure it's hourly.
Yes, yeah, and it's like a, a normal invoice that you would get from an attorney where it does have dates and activity, um, you know, on their invoices.
Would you, are you wanting to see a product from them?
You know, I've kind of reached out to Shelley.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
That's fine, we'll, we'll get together and I was just curious if there was like a work product that they were generating that we weren't seeing.
And a lot of it's probably offending conference calls and there's a, this whole adjudication thing with the water call. I can't remember what they call it, but that's going on. So there may be reasons why they, we wouldn't want to make that a public document.
Sure.
But I think Shelley should have, you should be able to take a look at that.
Yeah, if it was something related to conjunctive management, that might be helpful to know. That's one of my questions.
Oftentimes when, what I, what we see is when, uh, there's something that comes up that they need guidance or decision on, there'll be a presentation to us or.
Yeah.
Um, I think this might have predated you or you were that, we, we had a document that we needed approval for Bellevue to sign on to for the Hiawatha Canal. Um, things like that. So there, that's when we're seeing the product, I would say, is when they're presenting, um, or looking for guidance. But maybe meet with Shelley, go over it. And if there's something that you would like to see in terms of, uh, updates or written, uh, kind of information from them, I'm sure that's something we can discuss about, um, what you'd like to see in terms of production.
And, and just maybe kind of become familiar with the status of that. The conjunctive management and any lawsuits or any actions or calls or whatever on the table, so I'll follow up.
Okay. There aren't any other questions on claims, let's move on to new item C, the treasurer's report.
Any questions? So, um, I can kind of generalize if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Um, the first, uh, mine's out of, mine's out of order. Cash position obviously is a picture of our cash as a February twenty-three. Um, so that is just what is in all of the particular accounts. Um, to be noted, it is higher than where we were last year at this time, which is always good. Any questions about that? Okay, then overall, I believe your next report is a general fund. And, um, there's nothing that's like alarming me in terms of, we're at, you know, forty-two percent on operating expenses overall, which is pretty much on par for where we should be budget-wise. Um, I'm missing a page on my report, but, oh yeah, mine's all out of order, excuse me for all the misstep there. Income, I mean, it's all, there's nothing out of mind here unless somebody has a specific question about anything. Um, in particular, that, I haven't had a lot of time to think about this, obviously, because Cassell has been a lot of problem solving for me for the last two weeks. So, um, I ran out of a team's meeting to come to this meeting. It's been, we're still trying to get the data all right, although we're functioning in it. So it's been quite challenging right now. So this is the last set of reports out of playbook. And then you said, you'll, you'll get a whole new set come, uh, come March. Yes, Diane.
I called earlier today and had a couple of questions for you. I wasn't sure if you were able to get back.
Not able to get back.
Okay, all right. I just said, um, then, um, I, I think I'll wait, um, to to give you an opportunity to look into the questions that I had.
I have it on my list, Diane, I just, I couldn't get to it.
Yeah, got, I'm, I gotcha. No worries.
I did include a lot revenues versus lot-related expenses at the very end. So that, those expenses are expenses that are qualified to be paid out of lot revenues. So it's just showing you year-to-date where we are in terms of expenses that could be covered by lot revenues versus the revenue we have received. So just a quick update on that.
And where are lot revenues within the, the larger budgets, so I can just look at the percentage? Where are they in general right now?
They're in admin.
I'm in.
I know, I'm sorry, they're in streets.
Okay.
Yeah, or streets. Any questions about any of that? And Tom, I will get back to you so we can get together and move stuff.
And you move to the new system?
Do, how do you expect the reporting to change?
It's gonna look entirely different, just like your claims. It, it, it's a whole new ball of wax.
Okay. And, uh, so if that's next month, does it make sense for, because you've had questions? And I think we're all looking for ways of, different ways of looking at information and examining on per, does it make sense for the council at some point to have some sort of, with, with you kind of giving you enough time to familiarize, but kind of leading us through, just strictly about the finances and how it's being presented now and how we can look at it in a more code, you know, more cohesive way, if you will, because, um, sometimes that, you know, we're looking at these line items and they're not from your reporting, but they're simply disjointed because they're part of a different project. And maybe just after you implement Cassell, and you've asked actually about different reporting, um, possibilities, if that isn't something separate from this, like a special meeting, that's just kind of like, how can we improve a financial report?
I'd say I could look at the, in, in my opinion, kind of what the next agenda looks like for that April fourteenth. And if there's a, a nice chunk of time in there, I would say council come ready with all those questions.
Right.
Which should be ready to.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was thinking more.
I will, I, I'll give her the heads up, not.
Shelley needed some work.
Yeah, but I would say, I, you know, I would like to use council time, that's what this time is for here. Um, and if, you know, for any reason, we feel that we need to go deeper into that. But I think, um, using council meetings as a work in progress, where Shelley would be kind of the appropriate venue in, in the short term. And if we decide that it needs to go a little further than that, we can, but I, I'd say dive in before your council meetings and be prepared to ask those questions. And Shelley will be prepared to have answers.
Sounds good.
It's going to be, just so you know, the reporting, I'm hoping each month will get better as I can work in the system and cater it more to what we need. Um, but it's gonna take time.
Absolutely, and I think we have to offer some of the things, saying, hey, could we see some more continuity in this particular, so that's all I meant was.
Yeah, and I definitely appreciate council going direct to department heads, you know, to ask questions, to have preparedness for meetings. But I also want to make sure that those questions are being asked on the record so that our community is also seeing what questions we have about the budget. They, they see those questions and it's not just, oh, we talked to Shelley about it off, off, you know. Not that there's anything wrong with that, um, it just, it's not as transparent with our community of what questions you actually have about the budget and allows them to learn alongside council as we're talking through it. So I would just say, let's, let's keep asking the questions at these meetings. Um, of course, giving you time to prepare. Yeah, okay.
I, I mean, that maybe is kind of gen, a more general thing too, that there was a question asked last meeting, I saw in the minutes about, uh, um, the RV dump at Maverick, and it just mentioned that a question had been asked.
Yeah.
Didn't give any kind of information about a response to that. And so there may be a thing, that maybe something also came up about the burn destruction in those two, um, and and so, I, well, should I follow up with an email to someone that might know the answer to those questions?
Yeah.
Or do I, you know, ask in this context? I mean, probably there's some judgment to be made about what's appropriate to ask. Some things may not be, you know, if there's some executive session issue or something of that nature, but, um, I don't know if you have any guidance.
Well, I would say that's also, and this isn't a slight, but that's also something we could look into with our minutes if we feel that there needs to be a little bit, little bit more of a robust. Yeah, there's also recording, so, you know, something like the reference.
Record if it's posted, does that get posted so you can actually call it up?
It does, on, yeah, the web, YouTube, YouTube, thank you.
YouTube, well, yeah, and also.
And then on the, on the website.
I did the last one.
Yeah.
But were you actually referring, and I'm just asking, I'm trying to parse out what you're, so like if we bring up something like the, um, either the question about the RV or a question about something else. And, and as a council, we're wondering if, if there's been any, uh, determination on it, like.
The follow-up.
Yeah, any follow-up. Should we put those things up? Should those be on the agenda somewhere, like, oh, this is a, you know, like in the mayor report or whatever? You know, like something that we could say, we're still researching this, or we got an update on the structure and blah, blah, blah.
I would say as I'm getting updates from department heads, I am more than happy to bring them in as the mayor's report. If there's something that's actionable from it, you'll see it come back on the agenda at the appropriate time when the work is ready to be discussed.
Cool.
Um, I think that, um, that's part of, you know, what I, my role is to continue to follow up with our department heads. And, um, I know, you know, community, our community development director is actively, uh, working on the RV dump site with the, you know, the entity involved. And so I think those are things that will come back through, but, um, I think the opportunity for updating through the, the mayor's update and/or going direct to the, you know, department head, if needed. If it's something that you're like, hey, I missed the, the meeting, I'd love a little more information on this. But I feel like that's definitely appropriate.
And, and, you know, some, I mean, when I'm reviewing material, like I have these questions, I think, well, should I generate them now and send them to people so that they're kind of have an opportunity to prepare? So they're kind of have an opportunity to prepare a response. I mean, I'm truly appreciate that. Um, and then just think, well. What's what's appropriate to raise in this context? Because I certainly appreciate the transparency. I'm sure other people maybe are wondering about the mobile home or that's sitting there, you know, whatever. These things don't just are just an issue to me. I just observations maybe driving.
Which is why I like them to be asked on the record. So and I think that that's something we're actively working on is the the follow up and the follow through. So, um, it may not be, you know, the next meeting, we're getting an answer on it, but know that our department heads are working on these things. Um, and so I would say, um, if you have questions, feel free to ask myself or the department head, but also bear with us and give us the opportunities to. Get the answers, um, the correct answers and do the work and then present the information to you.
Sure.
Yeah. It's not always as.
Right.
Maybe quick as you want it to be, but it is happening. And I think trusting and having faith in your department heads, um, I think. That's that's something important and, um, you know, we'll keep working together to get information out to the public. And, um, kind of close the loop on things that we need to close the loop on.
Yeah, having been on in that spot, I certainly appreciate, you know, if things aren't answered immediately, it takes time.
Um, back to the treasurer's report.
Yes.
Okay, is there? But yeah, that all great discussion, so thank you. Um, any other questions for Shelley at this time on this treasurer's report?
Thank you.
At this time, I'll move on to item D, acknowledgement of Borough Annual Report for twenty twenty four. On file with the Bellevue City Treasurer and the State Controller's Office. Shelley, do you want to just make a note about it?
It's an annual requirement that, um, the urban renewal agencies have to, it's part of the transparency Idaho. And so we have to file this report. There's standard information, basically, that's all it is, is what they require. All the resolutions of everything that the Borough did over the last year is right, right there in one packet for you, so. Apologize for having to attach the audit because that's a long, lot of pages, but that's part of.
Yeah.
Part of the filing requirement is that your city audit or Borough audit, which is part of our city audit, has to be attached to that, so. That's all that is. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me on that.
I actually was happy to see in the packet, it's a really like great snippet way to familiarize, familiarize yourself with what the Urban Renewal Agency is. Who our board members are, what their budget looks like, kind of what has happened in the last year. So I think it's it's a great snapshot. So thank you very much.
Isn't there a new chair?
There is. Diane Shink. Is the new chair.
Yeah, it'd be nice if she reported to the council one day about their goals and objectives coming up. It kind of cool, we should put her on the agenda.
That or in the council report is a nice little section, too, that already exists, so.
Uh, duly noted.
Any questions for Shelley on the Borough Annual Report? I recommend holding on to that report. Yeah, stay to that, looking through it. Okay, um, item E, authorization of the mayor to sign an area of impact revalidation letter of support. Brian, you want to just pop in and give a little background on this?
All right, thank you, Brian Burke, New York Director. Uh, this one, uh, the state legislature, the last session, uh, passed a bill. Reconfiguring the area of impact rules. Uh, the good news is that our effect that was negotiated in twenty twenty three is compliant with those new rules. So one of the provisions, though, of the legislature, what legislation was that by December thirty first of this year, we have to. Confirm with the county our area of impact, uh, which is done through the county commissioners via ordinance. And just given staffing levels and such, such in the complexity of all the cities in Blaine County doing this. Uh, they want to get the easy ones at first. Uh, so that is. Why we are just reconfirming what we've already done. If we want to redesign it at some point in the future, we can always request it for you here.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, uh, actually, a cou- couple of comments. Um, in the letter, um. Where you say, um, in the first paragraph, land and water conservation.
You're looking at the wrong one.
Yeah.
Yep, we're.
That's the next one.
Yeah, so we are on page one seventeen, one eighteen in the packet.
Never mind.
Bye.
Don't go away.
I had a question about this. Um, if for any reason, uh, within this year, we renegotiate the ACI. Um, would we then need to do this process? Again, or?
Anytime we're gonna negotiate, we would need to, um. Well, the county commissioners will have to adopt an ordinance.
Okay. So there's still, even if we're signing this now in March, because we have till the end of the year, there's still opportunity to make adjustments that's needed.
Yeah.
If needed, not, but that's what we're pursuing at this time.
Um, Tom. I guess. Um, I kind of read that new code a little bit on this and. It seemed like. Uh, the the code type talked about a review and kind of reestablishment, um, or reconfirmation, you know, of your existing area of. Impact, no longer area of city impact, the area of impact. Has it, so the review basically hasn't hasn't been a broader review with the city or with the county. It's been just kind of your review of the current code and the current ACI, AI. And, um, is that accurate or is there maybe more by way of kind of interaction with the county and this city of Haley?
I have been, uh, communicating and working with the Blaine County Land Use Staff. Uh, they are preparing staff reports and all that and.
For this hearing is scheduled for the fifteenth.
I I understand they've already. They already done Haley's. Reaffirmated area of city impact.
I mean, I saw some notice in the paper that they had adopted, someone that kind of said Haley and the county had adopted an ordinance.
Yeah.
The county apparently has not yet done that, but the city of Haley has, is that?
Well, I don't think, I think it's just all in the county now, the way the ordinance read, the city doesn't even pass an ordinance.
Okay, yeah, it's odd, it gave an ordinance.
Yeah, it's all, it's all county now, and there's this, they changed the whole. Power structure on who gets to decide what the area of city impact is and.
Yeah. Okay, well, I I did, so that doesn't sound like the review's been kind of at staff level. There hasn't been communication really between the jurisdictions about. Either modifications or reconfirmation or anything of that nature. Code talked about that review occurring. And I wasn't sure whether that review had been at our council level.
So I've been with any officials.
I I mean, I I don't, um, maybe the only other question I have is is kind of what goes into deciding whether something is a consent item? Or whether it it maybe should be kind of broader discussion and review? This one maybe didn't strike me as as something that would be on a consent agenda, because it kind of, maybe, I don't, again, I'm kind of learning that. Maybe not, it required a little additional review. Um, I don't have any kind of problem with it. The letter of support, you know, just kind of reconfirming that. And as you say, we have the opportunity to reopen it if there's ever any questions to do that. Um, whether that's before December thirty first or after, as I understand that code, but. Um, that was just kind of questions, maybe what what goes into determining whether something is a consent item? This one seemed maybe a little more broad and you need to be classified that way.
Um, I can speak to that. Um, it's something that myself and our city clerk Amy, um, go through. And, um, oftentimes it can be proposed from the clerk or myself from as where they align or go into the agenda. And oftentimes I'm looking at, um, the potential level of discussion on the item or, um. You know, kind of where it falls in a category. Um, I'm finding with this council and it's completely. Okay, but it's different from the previous council. Um, I would say we have a lot more dialogue and discourse with this council. So, um, which I think is a very positive thing. So it's something to consider that maybe pulling some items out for further discussion in different categories. Um, just with previous councils, there was less discourse and discussion about items. So, um, every council meeting is a learning opportunity for myself and the city clerk to design our agendas for the next meeting. So if there's anything that you feel that. You also, with a consent agenda, have the opportunity to pull it out for further discussion.
Yeah.
Um, so we're we're kind of, because it's such a heavy consent agenda, we're going item by item. Typically, it's something we might move through and you might pull it out individually, so.
And so that's the appropriate thing to say. I think that's something that should be pulled out of the consent agenda, put under the regular agenda, and a motion maybe is made to that effect and it's done.
Exactly.
And you're on your way, if it's approved or not.
And you always have the opportunity to do that. I think we're a little long-winded on this consent agenda, which is totally fine. And we're going through, like I said, line by line, but, um, sometimes it might be very quick. And that would be your opportunity to pull it out, so. Yeah, thank you for the feedback, though. If there is no more discussion on, um. This letter, but please, if I'm rushing you, let me know. Um, I'm happy to move on to line F. Almost, and we can always jump back, so F.
F would be one that I would ask to have pulled out. Um, I have questions about, I mean, this is the disposal of an asset.
Okay, so why don't we?
Okay.
Um, would you guide Suzanne through making that motion?
Um. I.
Or.
Is it a motion or just you, I would like to pull.
Ask or pull it.
Okay.
I would like to, would you please pull?
Item F.
Item F from the consent agenda for larger, um.
Discussion.
That's all you got.
Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, I thought it was a little more complex.
Yeah, just pull it for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're gonna pull line, um, F out of the consent agenda for further discussion. So at this time, um, if there's no other discussion on items on the consent agenda, I would take a motion.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as amended, um, because there were some corrections to Amy's minutes as well as pulling item F.
Seven. Oh, seven.
Damn it, second.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergman.
Yes.
Council President Shane.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item six, which was our BCRD presentation, is no longer happening. So I think this is an appropriate time to, um, open the discussion about item F. Uh, pulled from its consent agenda, authorization of the mayor to sign a letter of support for nomination to LWCF by BLM for stray horn property. Okay, so this is where we are. We're on page one twenty two in our, um, agenda just for council. And Brian Parker, will you start us off?
All right, thank you. Uh, I will add, uh, Carrie York is behind me, uh, from the Wood River Land Trust, uh, can answer a lot of technical questions. She's really been doing a lot of work on this, um. But, uh, so if you guys remember back in December, there was a, um, appraisal that was in front of you guys on the. Uh, sixty one acres in Straight Horn that was given to us as a, uh, annexation, uh, more or less fee. Uh, for us to monetize in the future, um, that annexation came in a one, two point one million, I believe it was, um. And so one of the avenues we've been pursuing is, uh, using land and water conservation funds through BLM, uh, to facilitate BLM becoming the owner of that property. Uh, and that way we would still get the full appraised value of it. And, um, it would. Stay at public conservation land. So, you know, what in front of you guys tonight is the letter of support for submitting that nomination, which is due by Friday to the, from BLM local to the national office? Signing this letter of support, submitting that nomination does not preclude us from exploring other options or saying no in the future, should we want to. Does not disposing of property, is not signing ourselves off to anything. Is just keeping this avenue open. We don't get a good packet together for the national nomination. This don't.
So you don't even get to be considered. That's basically what you're trying to preserve an opportunity and nothing else but an opportunity. And there's nothing else actionable in this. Tom.
I can provide a little more context.
Please, Carrie, go ahead.
Sure, I'm Carrie New York with the Wood River Land Trust. I know most of you, uh, but if you're not familiar with the Land Trust, we're a local nonprofit conservation organization. We work to protect land, water, and wildlife habitat in the Wood River Valley and all throughout South Central Idaho. Um, in Bellevue, we've worked really closely with the city and the friends of the Howard Preserve on the Howard Preserve Acquisition and Management. For a number of decades now. Um, we also own a property on Calpechur Ridge, and we've been involved with a few other types of, um. Issues in Bellevue that deal with, um, land protection. So, um, the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, it was established in nineteen sixty four by Congress. As a way to protect recreational resources, open space, and cultural heritage. In twenty twenty, the Great American Outdoors Act, um, fully funded the Land and Water Conservation Fund permanently. Before that, Congress didn't always fully authorize it, so funds were much more limited. Now it's fully funded, and so we have a greater opportunity to utilize those resources here for our community. So, um, after that happened in twenty twenty one, the Land Trust and other conservation organizations like the Nature Conservancy. Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, uh, the Conservation Fund. We wanted to try to create kind of a strategic plan for trying to utilize that source of funding for conservation in Blaine County. All the way through the, from the Pioneer Mountains over to the Soldier Mountains. So that's kind of the general project area that we've identified. And since twenty twenty one, we have received funding for seven other projects throughout that whole area. Most of them are in Blaine County. There's one that's over in Butte County. And the way that we've selected these properties is for their, again, their wildlife habitat, their recreational opportunities. And for all of them, they're either entirely surrounded by BLM lands or surrounded on two or three sides. So, for example, the Stray Horn property, um, you might know that it's surrounded on, um. Kind of two to three sides, depending on how you look at it, by BLM land. Um, so we. Out of those, uh, seven projects, we have two that have been completed, or actually, I'm sorry, three that have been completed and four that are in the works. So, um, we've been working through this process for four years now. Um, and so I just wanted you to know that so that you can, um, you can know that we've been working on other properties through this process. And the Land Trust has been acting as a partner, um, in this with the BLM for a few years. Um, so the reason that we selected the Stray Horn parcel is for all the reasons Brian mentioned. Uh, because we would like to see it kept as open space for the public and for recreational opportunities. And because of how it's located within BLM lands. Additionally, um, as you all know, uh, the BLM has constructed recreational trails around that property on either side of the canyon. And so keeping it open really will enhance the user's experience. If that land was sold by the city to a developer and subdivided and developed, that canyon would look much, much different. So we saw a great way for the city to realize the monetary value in the property and at the same time leave it open for protection. Um, so that's why we're, uh, supporting this proposal to apply for funds. Like Brian said, this is, it's called a nomination, but it's basically an application. Um, and so it'll get submitted to our Shishan BLM field office, it'll go to the Twin Falls District Office. And then, um, like he said, it goes all the way up to national headquarters in DC. Uh, we feel, um, you know, really good about this application, given our past history with, um, with this funding source. And the Land Trust, our role in this, as we played with some of the other properties, is we are helping kind of coordinate the effort. We're helping get support from the commissioners, our community, other organizations. Um, if it's funded, then we will also help with due diligence, like, um, the BLM has to get another appraisal for their standards. We do, um, different like environmental assessments and things like that, so we would be, um, helping to support that. And then we will also be helping, um, make sure that the transaction occurs according to all the BLM guidance and standards regarding the chain of transaction. So, um, yeah, we, we hope that you approve the support letter and here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Um, well, I remember, what was it, last May or June, that when that uh, the Stray Horn owner had mentioned that that land was out there. That the first thing that the then mayor had noted said was, oh, maybe we can sell those parcels off. And I will think, certainly for me, I thought, well, you know, I miss just going out there like it used to be before Sherry Ham. You know, these things happen, certainly. Um, so I'm not at all opposed to this direction. I know there's some other ones. I guess my concern um, is, you know, um, Wood River Land Trust is very much a density advocate. In Bellevue, written um, supporting letters for text amendments and espoused density. And that's one way of, you know, taking Bellevue land out of a little bit of an expansion. Um, so I'm, I would be concerned if there were any sort of additional agreements that were in the works. Like, hey, if we help you with this, we need some more affordable housing on Main Street. And, and that's already been expressed by the organization, so I think that would be one of my caveats. As we examine support from Wood River Land Trust, is that they have expressed um, very clearly a belief and an interest. That our community should be denser, and I know there also been land. I mean, it's remarkable the things they've acquired and done in the Howard Reserve. And I would love to see, I believe that, I think that may be our best option. But I would have concerns um, about an organization that has been so outspoken about density in Bellevue. And what, and just being careful as we negotiate that path.
Carrie, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I guess um, I'd offer just a little bit of um, clarification from the Land Trust standpoint. Um, I think what we are trying to promote is our principles of smart growth. So protecting outlying areas that are important for wildlife, for recreation. Um, such as this parcel and trying to move growth that could occur out there into areas. That are already residential. So in, that's how I would frame the Land Trust's point of view on that. Um, and other than the support letter that we have written and the conversations that we've had with Brian and Rick and the BLM. Um, there's no other strings attached to this.
Thank you.
Tom, go ahead.
Thanks, Carrie. The um, one of the things that, I mean, I, one time is now, right, we have till the end of the week. So a few times now to submit this and have any objections to um, to submitting a letter, you know, nomination for this money. Be seized that opportunity. Um, how much flexibility, like if, do you have? I mean, I know there are other private parcels at the head of Slaughter House. There's also that Becker parcel um, that's there, you know, you know, if the ci- if the city said, well, okay, there's. I think I'm correct that Don Becker has passed away.
Uh, his wife.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Rumors. The uh, but I knew there'd been, you know, maybe some transition in the family that might result in them not retaining that property. If, if the city said, well, okay, we would like that piece because it's further up and kind of in the canyon. It might be more valuable as a, as a preservation piece. And so we would trade that, for example, with Becker's, you know, and say, we'll give you the, the bottom five acres of the city piece. In exchange for what they own further out the canyon or something of that nature. I mean, is there any flexibility in the system to kind of do that type of thing? If you, or it's like, well, you got money for the sixty-one and it's now preserved and you don't really have that opportunity anymore.
Yeah, I um. We, we haven't really explored exactly what you're um, suggesting. I think it's, it's an interesting idea. I think we would need to do it bef- so if we're funded through the application. Um, I think something like that would have to take place before the BLM acquired the land. Because it's really hard to do things like that, like that when a public um, federal entity owns property. Um, I will tell you that we are also trying to use this funding source for the Becker property. Um, so, you know, hopefully, uh, both of these things will work out. Um, but that, that is an interesting idea, and it's something that we can talk more about. If, if that's something that the city would want to kind of think about going forward.
I mean, you know, obviously that can't be resolved tonight in this letter.
Yeah.
Go out, so, so maybe, it, it was just kind of a question that came to mind as.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, that kind of thing happens in a conservation world and, and development world generally, you know, sometimes. And, and um, you know, just curious about that. Plus, you know, it's really kind of set in the sixty-one acres, you don't really have any opportunity to maybe wheel a deal, if, if so to speak. When that can be a positive thing to try and, you know, do that.
To fully clarify, Brian or Carrie, do you feel that signing onto this letter would restrict that type of exploration or negotiation potentially?
I don't know so.
Okay.
Thank you. It kind of sounds like you're trying to jump on the opportunity, but there has not been, and there, and it's acknowledged that there hasn't been. The level of due diligence about what this opportunity is, it's simply saying, oh, end of the week, we better make sure we lock this in as one of our section.
Yes, as one of our opportunities.
And I support that too.
Yeah, so I mean, it makes perfect sense, and I think, so your point, there's a lot more conversation about these things. And there's something where, you know, we're just trying to get the letter in so we can have a section about it and not say, oh, we missed it. It's not a section anymore of our discussion, right?
Not something we want to be part of the Bellevues. Okay. All right.
All right.
Councilmember Shane, did you have a question on the right of the letter?
I believe my question got answered.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we support the mayor um, signing this letter of support for nomination. To the Land and Water Conservation Fund by BLM for the Stray Horn property.
Second.
Council President Shane.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Carrie, for being here, and thank you for that discussion and um, the ideas that came out of that. I'm gonna move us on to, we can, okay. Item seven, new business, um, line item A, consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-five dash ten. Establishing additional rules for the management of Bellevue City Parks and providing an effective date. Um, I just want to acknowledge that we have um, members from our Parks Committee here in the audience this evening. So um, there is an opportunity to have discussion if needed. Um, but I will have Brian Parker get us started on this.
Alright, thank you. Uh, this resolution uh, comes from a recommendation from the Parks Committee we met last week. And went through the resolution, uh, specifically uh, regarding seasonal events. Meaning uh, events that require a reservation or their weekly, monthly, or recurring reservations. Generally, these are intended to make them administratively easier for us to manage a staff. And reduce uh, opportunities for damage to occur to the parks. The main park that this is going to be subject to is O'Donnell Park. Uh, because it is the largest and has the most use for soccer and softball and those sorts of things that are, you know, weekly leagues and that sort of sort of thing. I did get a mention from the Land Trust suggesting that the uh, reference the Howard Park management plan. And renew that when you get seasonal park regulations. I think I um, want to make sure we're going through these proper cameras, we're going through the Parks Committee on these sorts of things. So I must have just added to this language as it's time, uh, but I promise you we'll do that in the interim and add it into a future uh, and discuss in the Parks. So. Starting twenty twenty-six, uh, the reservation window uh, book would be January first to March first of the calendar year. And they will need to include a maintenance plan for uh, park, for park, uh, for the clerk to review. Uh, the applicants need to meet with the clerk or the uh, appropriate designee of the county clerk. Uh, to review park rules and regulations uh, prior to getting their permit granted. The clerk has the right to schedule maintenance days uh, where there's no activity to occur in order to, for the grass to recover or whatever. If we have weather events or other things that are going to uh, impact the park, the clerk has the right to. Cancel reservations. Uh, and unless granted through the council, uh, permits will be granted between November first and April thirtieth. We don't see many of those, but uh, I want to make sure there was an avenue in case somebody wanted to book a snowshoe softball league or something like that. But it's authorized to delegate duties to other departments, uh, the clerk, the public courts, marshal, et cetera, whoever uh, in parentheses. But to assign tasks and uh. Failure to comply with park rules and permits uh, terms can result in revocation of permit and non-eligibility for future terms. With that, I stand pretty clear.
Before we jump into questions real quick, I just want to give a little background and context of um, I talked to Brian about this. Um, and asked him to bring this to the Parks Committee, um, and did. I, when we were going through, sorry, when I was on council last year and we were going through um, permit approvals. I do realize that we made uh, blunders on um, approving permits to be used earlier in the April season. Because previous to that, um, the council that, you know, the group of the council that I was with. We had um, kind of acknowledged and or accepted these, a, a version of these recommendations that came through in twenty twenty-three. So I felt that um, it was an instance where we had made a commitment to the Parks Committee, uh, approved something. And then uh, did not implement it or follow through. So I had asked, you know, Brian to work with the Parks Committee to get something more official uh, on the books. That um, we could be held as a council and as a city accountable to. So that um, the robust and thoughtful work of the Parks Committee uh, is being implemented uh, thoughtfully. And we're accountable for what is happening. So that's a bit of the background, and then the Parks Committee and um, our Community Development Director have brought us this to the table. So thank you very much for all of your effort on this, and I'd open it up for questions and discussion.
I just wanted to make sure I understand seasonal being uh, activities that are recurring over a season, right?
There.
And is there anything, is this specific only, it says seasonal, but there wasn't any, anything about just one-off? You know, you got a big volleyball game that weekend or just for the weekend, or is there something separate for that?
There.
But that's already, okay.
In our parks uh, chapter of the code, there are seasonal events, major events. And large events. And one other, I can't remember the name of it, but it is less than twenty people, twenty to ninety-nine people, over a hundred people. And they all have their own separate.
And this is shoring up seasonal.
Yes, that's seasonal events that require recurring reservations.
And what we're seeing is seasonal events are the higher impact on the parks versus, you know, one, the one-offs. We would hope that um, with our fees and our permit process, that is kind of helping to balance that impact. But this is, I believe, um, kind of trying to uh, create a balance between the impact that's happening at the parks. And um, making sure that the parks are accessible to seasonal activities. Like, yeah, baseball, soccer, those groups.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I uh, when I was uh, reading through this material today. Um, the first thing that jumped out to me on the resolution was that we were still referred to the Bellevue Park. And Tree Committee. Um, and I spent uh, quite a bit of time this afternoon doing some review. Amy uh, helped look into uh, this for me as well. Um, but we did pass an ordinance in um, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, it, it's ordinance twenty twenty dash oh-two, and it was passed um, in. Uh, after the summary was passed in February um, of twenty twenty. So that ordinance does exist. I still think there's some homework that needs to be done on that. Because um, the city attorney raised the question whether or not that ordinance was actually published. If it was not published, um, we've got a, a little bit of a problem. Um, and so um, I, um, I would like to work with um, Tom. Uh, since Parks is your bailiwick. Um, and as well as Amy and, and maybe try and um, do a little bit, bit more research and find out. Where in the big picture this ordinance really is. Um, having said that, um, the ordinance, it, it basically, what it does is it removes any reference to the Tree Committee. Um, it, it removed any reference to the maintenance of trees and shrubs. And um, the, the purpose for some of those amendments was that in effect, we were tasking. The Park Committee to now become arborists. So that they were looking at trees and determining, determining whether they were diseased or needed to be removed. Or pruned or whatever, and, and um, and the city council that passed this ordinance at the time. Um, didn't believe that that was an appropriate use of our Park Committee. Um, so in reading through this new resolution, um, I do have a, a, some hesitation. Um, on, on several of the duties that the city council or the city clerk is being tasked with. One of those is um, giving the clerk the right to cancel specific reservations. Um, when damage to facilities is likely to occur due to heavy rains or weather events. So now what we're asking the clerk to do is also become a meteorologist. And so there's, there, there's some concern that I have about the use of the clerk shall. That language feels very much like an ordinance rather than a resolution to me. Um, you know, like we could, we could pass a resolution that yesterday was Lindsey Bond Day. Um, or, you know, something to that effect, but, but I just, I just, um, I have a little, a little bit of concern about how. Shall is, is used in this ordinance, and I repeated myself a couple of times now. So I think it's an appropriate time for me to stop talking.
So, uh, we'll get to the Park and Tree Committee. Could I borrow a copy of your ordinance real quick?
Yeah.
No, one minute of this.
Okay.
And the reason that I. Let's just, I mean, get full language.
I, I'm not sure if this is the full language or not, Brian.
Yeah, so, committee established membership, appointment terms, removals. There is your right to the Bellevue Park, Park and Tree Committee, BPT straight through C. So the abbreviation changed, the name did not change. That is something we want to clean up, if we need to read up on this one, or regardless, uh, but that is why.
Yeah.
I continue to refer to the Park and Tree Committee.
Good catch.
Then the uh, this, I would also mention that the uh, Parks Committee meeting, we discussed that, and I promise to review on it. And so. The, the shall language in here, you know, these are additional rules adopted by ordinance as prescribed by city code. So they are, they're rules, they have standards uh, and expectations. The reason that I use the clerk as the catch-all for everything is because, one, that is mostly, has, have most of that chapter is written. Where the clerk is the administrator, uh, to the um. Sasa is going to be in taking and reviewing, uh, these are other courts, generally speaking. However, the clerk has the right to assign tasks to whoever she wants.
Yeah.
And so.
I did see that.
Going to be some, some partnership and cross-departmental collaboration for sure. Um, and the specific reservation to, to rain, uh, that is, the clerk reserves the right. There's mostly language to the people. There's mostly language that people have signed off that we have that ability. We are authorized to do it if needed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Will you clarify, just because this has been a discussion between us, um, your reasoning for a resolution versus an ordinance on this?
The ordinance directs that, uh, rules and regulations will be done by, um, resolution.
Thank you. Okay.
So instead of going back through and mandating the ordinance, you just.
We just do another reso.
Yeah.
And that saves publication and public hearings and money.
Yeah, that makes sense. First, there's something we have rules and regulations for permit.
Got it.
Regulations. Uh, then you can change them.
So is this also the type of document where, um, you know, the, the city clerk reserves the right to cancel specific reservations, which, which, you know, we all know what can happen to resources in the wrong weather though. But is this also where is, where do you see the additional requirement saying and notify the person within twenty-four hours? Or where is our commitment to our side of the performance? It's just like, it was running out and she's like, cancel your hours raining, you know, it could be even after the fact and people, we, we know you can't always be a meteorologist, but sometimes it's simply, it finished raining, it was such a deluge, the fields are unusable the next day. It could be sunny. You know, it's not necessarily an atmospheric event, but where have we, where is it codified and where does it become procedure? That there has to be some sort of notification. Where, is that something in here or that's something subsequent?
That is, uh, this, since this is our first go around at doing it this way, I think is a wait and see and adjust as needed. Um, I think, uh, kind of good paid effort, we will do our best to give folks a call saying, hey, it's looking awfully gray out there. Just a heads up, we may need to call your practice staff.
So, but if let's just say you did, you said, hey, you know, this is part of our performance. If you're going to cancel, these are your steps. Would it be in here or would it be in a separate handbook? You know, just a handbook for the staff. And that's where I was just trying, how much detail or we do we have to look at?
I would think there'd be more of an SOP for the department.
Yeah, but okay, I totally agree. I just wonder, okay.
I would say, uh, you know, when it comes to resolution or something like this, I think that, um, there's an element of flexibility. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, that you'd want to leave for your, your clerk and or your, your staff. Um, and I do agree that the SOP would be the appropriate place for that.
Totally agree. I wasn't sure if there was another level, so.
And that's something that we are working on, um, you know, as we're going through all of this, I do, Amy, um, is working on SOPs. I think actually all departments have been asked to do SOPs in different ways, um, as we start to keep working through our work plans and things that are coming up at council, so.
And I, man, um, so I'm, I'm reading in this ordinance and while we do strike through the T, um, the title of the ordinance.
Chapter title, yes. It, it leaves some room for clarity on what the name is.
Because the title does say, you know, delete the reference to tree committee. So, um, I think there's a little cleanup that can be done.
Yeah.
She doesn't like mine either.
Are there any, um, specifics within this resolution that, um, any lines that have been written that anyone takes problem with here or would like further clarification on?
I think I have one more question, um, and maybe I'm just missing it in here, um, and I, is there, um, a balance or something we're doing with the calendar to make sure that there's appropriate time for just local, non-seasonal reservation time? Is that, was just, that was part of how you evaluate this?
Yeah, I think that's going to be again, kind of a SOP sort of thing, um. But yeah, I think it's going to depend on how many applications or we get in your.
Is it really a problem, right?
Right, and, uh, we will do our best to staff to make sure that it is distributed evenly and that there is time for it to be fairly.
I think O'Donnell specifically is quite a large expanse as well. And so, um, what I've seen, you know, as a resident around there during the summers, you'll, you'll have the, uh, sports groups and then you'll have pockets of i- individual residential use. Um, but I think that is nice to note kind of on the calendar. And I do feel that that is something that has come, um, down from recommendations from the parks about certain days and rest days. So, um, I have seen those recommendations, um, come through and that's something that we could tie into the SOP. I think those recommendations have already been presented.
Yeah, and I, I'm mostly just trying to figure out if you're asking me for more opinions on this or if they're going to be somewhere else. So I think you, you, seems like you, you have them.
But that's, if, that's something that, you know, if you feel that that's appropriate to put in here, this is the opportunity to, um, you know, say that, adjust it, um, if you'd like to. If you feel there's anything lacking, um, this is the time to kind of add more.
I, I like what you got. I, I mean, I really like, I look at the resolution and I think to me, this is, this is an SOP. So there's clearly a balance that that happens. So I, I think there's just a huge benefit to us having an SOP and, you know, those are, those are binding agreements with the staff and, um, and then you've got this as your, as your toddler, right? And I agree with you about that part. That's our park. It's down the, you know, just a block away and that's where we're going to play soccer and we've never had any problems and the kids are there or the, the guys are there and so, but I just was curious if that was something that you were trying to codify in it, wasn't it?
Tom?
Um, this is something that is open for public comment, is it, it will be. I don't know, park committee members that are here want to comment.
Um, it's, yeah.
And partly I've mentioned that because as a committee of three, you know, we, we really, you know, I can't sort of call anyone to, because that's a meeting essentially to say, oh, is this okay? You know, so it's kind of like, um, that, that's a little bit of restriction. Whereas if there were five, you could kind of have a conversation and not worry about that so much, but so, so I'm not sure, this, this was presented to us at the meeting, um. It was kind of a late arriving draft and, and as a result, I didn't have so much, I'm much shooting for myself as much time to review it as I hoped. Um, I, I don't see anything that's problematic here. It, does the resolution seem like the appropriate tool rather than the kind of ordinance process that have to do too much? There's just a lot more flexibility with something like this to do by resolution. Um, the, the committee did talk about a number of things beyond the scope of this resolution.
Okay.
And, um, one of them were, were fees. And, uh, and as Brian kind of pointed out, that meeting, you know, that's something that's appropriate for a fee resolution. I vote for this resolution and, and I understand that and, and I don't know where that is kind of on the agenda. That's the kind of thing that occurs every year. There's maybe a review of a fee resolution. And that happens, you know, every April or, or it kind of just happens, you know, when there's a need for that to, to occur. But, um, that, that was something that certainly was a part of the parks committee, um, discussion at a prior meeting. And, and there might've been some other things too that, that members that are here have more of a share.
I can speak to the fee, um, the, the, the fee, uh, structure. Uh, Brian was right in saying, uh, that that is something that will be appropriate for later. We are having all departments review, uh, their fee schedules and that will be something that we have brought to council. Um, the hope is that that is a, uh, more often thing that is happening. It's a yearly review and then um, adjustments as needed are brought to council. Um, and the hope is for that to also happen before the budget cycle, um, the budgets are happening. So there hasn't been frequency or consistency with that. And so the hope is that we can initiate and continue that. So that is, um, within all of our department work plans and, um, our city clerk is, uh, taking the lead on, uh, the fee review, um, and the fee schedule being brought to council for review. I don't have the schedule right in front of me to say which agenda it'll be on, but.
In June.
Yeah, something in June is our hope. Yeah, is to bring it in June. Um, so that being said, parks is part of that review, um, under the appropriate department head review of that. So they, that will be happening in conjunction with what the recommendations have come from the parks committee. Um, that will be part of the review process.
One of the other I discussed last, parks committee meeting was setting up for a recurring regular monthly meeting. So expect more stuff from parks.
Um, if any, if the other members of the parks committee, um, would like to comment, please just raise your hand and I'm happy to call on you to speak.
Uh, Kristen Fletcher, Jr., you're not fourth, but I live across the street from, uh, Bill, uh, sorry, Memorial Park.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one clarification there, uh, mayor, um, our first, uh, and very comprehensive recommendations to city council was in twenty nineteen. It was not in twenty twenty-three. We would like to be called the Parks Department or Parks Committee, um, and not Park because we want to represent all the parks. Um, and lastly, uh, I, and I mentioned this to Brian at the meeting, I think it's a lot of responsibility to put on your city clerk. Um, regardless if she or he, as the future might bring, divvy said information out. She's still the person that has to be responsible for making sure all of this is done and it's a lot. Um, so I just urge you folks really to think about that, um, and maybe, um, set up something in advance as this starts to get finalized of exactly what that's going to be instead of kind of sort of saying that the city clerk is going to do that. Kind of providing her some, some real support and some structures and procedures. Um, and then the last thing was, um, and maybe your, your streets people are experts in this, um, but who determines the wear and tear of in this particular case, O'Donnell Park? Um, perhaps a consultation with Clearwater or some other company like that, um, to, to learn what that would be. I mean, if we get an inch of rain, do you wait a day? Do you wait two days? Who's going to go back and check on that? Um, so I would suggest getting some sort of, um, uh, professional advice, at least at the front end of that, um, to train the staff if they're going to be making these decisions.
As, as it currently is set up, do does the marshal and the public works department get to sign off on any of these applications?
Yes. When I was reading through this, um, I did think about, you know, public works involvement, marshal involvement. Um, I, I hear what everyone's saying about the, the workload on the city clerk, but I also understand the intention of when it was drafted is that the city clerk would be the communication leg of the, um, already existing work that's happening, you know, cross-departmentally, um, in terms of managing and uh, kind of keeping eyes on the park. Um, so I see, uh, when I read it, um, I saw the city clerk as just the communication end of that, not, uh, the one having to go out of the office, checking on things and, and monitoring. Um, but that was my interpretation. So I understand how, um, it leaves a little open to interpretation there. Um, and just to clarify on the twenty twenty-three thing, yes, um, it was brought in twenty nineteen, but the discussion that was had with the twenty twenty-three council resulted in, um, unapproval, um, acknowledgement that never was turned into a resolution or codified into anything. And that's more of the timeline I was referencing, just so you know, I, I did definitely acknowledge that twenty nineteen was when you had brought it forth first. So I apologize for the misspeak. Um, I, yeah, was there anything else from?
Um, talk about how, how is used, um, when the softball, was that comfort that you saw?
Yeah.
Hi, well, Christina Van Newland, seven one seven, Elm Street, Bellevue. I live across the street from O'Donnell Park. And, um, you know, I'm even just looking down at the new business B and the three-day elite. Um, when you have both soccer and softball or hardball playing at the same time, first of all, there's not enough parking. Second of all, it's a huge impact in that residential neighborhood. And so when we had proposed in twenty nineteen is that, like, softball takes Monday and Wednesday, soccer takes Tuesday, Thursday. The weekends, if they have tournaments, can't be on the same weekend. They have to alternate, you know, pick different times. And it just makes it a lot more manageable. Um, it has also fluctuated between being adult and being child-driven. And so when it's like the youth softball or soccer, um, there is double the traffic because you've got parents rushing to drop them off and they rush to run errands and then they rush to pick up their kid and they're rushing back. And, um, there's a lot of speeding, a lot of stop signs that are being ran and, um, just seems dangerous because the speed limit around the park is fifteen and it's not really being.
I think you're super close.
Add to that, that, um, uh, since we wrote those recommendations in twenty nineteen, there's been a subdivision, um, that's been built.
Right.
Just kind of upstream of that. And so all, sometimes there's barely enough room for a car to come down, um, Slaughter House Gold Road. Um, so that was another reason of trying to alternate activities. Plus it opens up the park. It's not a sports field. It's a park. It opens up a park to other uses besides soccer, um, and softball.
And another thing that, um, you know, we had made a recommendation that particularly with the soccer, that the fields be rotated. Um, so because you can see that the, in front of the goalies, the grass gets very worn out right there. And, um, last summer, the Caribbean population all of a sudden really started using the parks. And by the end of the summer, it was up to probably about sixty people, um, pretty much six days a week.
You've actually seen the volleyball?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the volleyball, where they set up their nets, there's grass in there was just torn apart. I have pictures of it. And, um, so there's kind of two aspects going on there and that they've kind of gone over that twenty, twenty people as well as the, um, the use. It's not being rotated.
Sounds like we still have things to work out.
Yes.
Um, concerns to kind of.
Well, you remember, uh, Tammy, is that, be, you know, were you Elvis back in two thousand and thirteen? I thought we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, days you're supposed to play and not play and rotating the, uh, especially the soccer players on the different grasses. And I, I, it's not happening anymore. I don't know.
Probably not. Well, and that is, that's the intention of this is, I think the recommendations were um, brought to council, they were discussed, but it never turned into something that was codified and then, um, implemented. So I hate to see that it's just another discussion, another discussion, another discussion. There's not any, uh, tangible implementation and action on it.
The other thing that's happened is in twenty nineteen, um, soccer was more adult and it was, um, softball adult. And now it's kids. And so now it's Idaho surf soccer, youth and, um, uh, I don't know what the hardball is.
Is it Mavericks?
Mavericks.
Mavericks.
Mavericks, okay. But it's youth now. So it's a whole nother group of people that have to be educated on the park.
Mm-hmm.
Parks.
And just a lot of responsibility again for the city clerk to, to track all that and, and, you know, do the people who have, who are using the park, do they actually have a reservation or did they just, all fifty of them just come? How, how does that work? I don't know. I don't have answers for this. I just have a lot of questions.
Um, there's a representative from the Mavericks team and it seems, I'd love to hear.
You comment.
Okay. Yeah, let, let me, and if, if, if I don't feel they're appropriate, I might stop you. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just to say, I'm Riza Georgie. I'm on the board for Idaho Mavericks and I'm a parent. Um, so we had three days a week last year. It was, I believe, Tuesday, Thursday and Sundays, which Sunday we literally never used, but it was in case we wanted to host like a friendly tournament on the weekend, which we never did. Um, actually, no, I, I took that back. We did one time. Um, so when we had the reservation, um, towards the end of the summer, we were kind of having to, uh, politely ask volleyball players because they did not have a reservation and they were in the outfield and it was, we have stop at some times because it just was so dangerous to have all those people and their kids were running through our field. And, um, if there's a spot to say like either on the online calendar or if there's a. or if there's a public fold that can be put on the side of the building there that says this team has this where the ratings from this time to this time in English and in Spanish. My Spanish is very limited, so I'm trying to use my translator to ask them politely to wait until we're done or come before we're there. Because, yeah, we had several of their children run onto the field as we're doing batting practice. And that was, you know, I mean, we stopped immediately and asked them to leave, but still, you know, you don't want to get into it with another group. And then the soccer wasn't so much of a problem as far as us being there on the same day. Our kids don't head that far. So I don't know about the use of the same on the same days. But like we talked to the soccer people and, you know, they said, hey, if the ball comes your way or ball comes our way, we will stop and wait for you. You know, you're very communicative in that sense. But yeah, I completely see, you know, the soccer fields can get, you know, used a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to, I just want to make a comment about the key, the the rules and the reservations. Internally, Public Works, Community Development and myself have been, we're looking into kiosks for the parks or some kind of a larger board structure where the rules will be posted in English and Spanish. And then in that will have the breakdowns of, you know, if you have over 20 people, permits are required, things of that sort. And then that's where we will also be able to post our reservations to make it very clear. So that was a recent discussion within the departments and getting some financials together on that to get that activated. Because I am in agreeance with you where I think that we've now kind of reached that point where once we get all our rules in place, having them published and posted and all the appropriate locations and making sure permits are happening for group sizes and all of that. I think the one thing I'm seeing and council, please jump in on this is maybe a little bit about the days in here that might be what's lacking in this resolution potentially. And if that's something you guys feel needs to go in there or want to discuss further or Brian?
The reason that I did not include this is, again, this is the first go around at this and I didn't want to get 20 soccer reservations and two softball reservations and paint ourselves into a corner on the reservations. Again, we'll do a good faith effort to do things that make sense in your best little part.
So who does make the reservation? Like who's the actual person that makes the reservations? That would actually affirm them is that through the the request process, right? And then, and the reason I'm asking is it really is true, right? We have parking considerations and traffic considerations. You know, neighbors live there, right? And so I played in in sports where the parks are in a place where we don't finish till 10:30 and nobody, there's, you know, you're in the middle of the city, nobody cares. But in this environment, it ends at a certain time. So I'm wondering, how does that get included in a decision-making process? Or where do you come from and say, you know, we we are measuring our scheduling by saying, we don't believe there'll ever be more than 60 cars or how many cars can we tolerate? And I'm just wondering what the, how the process is for that. So you do have a reference point or she has a reference point and you say, sorry, we can't do it. We've hit the quota, right? There can't have any more cars that, or we don't do it past that hour. And so is that also, do we think that's SOPs? Is that where that goes?
In the application as well.
Well, I was just going to reference, yeah, I say reference it later in the pack. You can see the application and kind of what's included there in terms of information and what's asked of on the application, days of use, times of use. So I think at this time, the calendar and the clerk's determination of how many applications have come through. I think the window of application time that is referenced in this resolution of you know, when we're accepting the applications would allow the clerk to weigh out, okay, we have this soccer, this softball, because we're, we're, we have a window of time when applications can be received.
And you do it at the end. Is that right? They all get collected and then you respond. Oh, God. So it's like the big scheduling, I'm saying, okay.
We have an application window. We have a review window where we get together and put together a big old schedule. And we let the folks know and then they go play.
And that scheduling is where you would apply your, no more than 60 cars or this is the exact thing you got.
I've got Kristen who'd like to speak.
In our 2019 recommendation, we did identify an area that is owned by the city. It's a city right of way on the Eighth Avenue. It's on State Street. That is sufficient for, I can't remember, maybe 15 or 20 cars. With a little bit of grading and maintenance, you know, some crush rock or whatever. So this would be as your, if you were the batter in the batting box, it would be the street to your right. There's a a big hedge of trees. I don't know if they're providing or whatever, but a dense that would help protect the people whose homes are there. That was one consideration, just because you could park, but it would still be screened from the homeowners on the other side of those very tall shrubs. So just a thought going forward. Could accommodate more more parking that way in the congested Slaughter House Gold Road less.
And I know this is a little off topic, but with the Parks Committee meetings, considering during the monthly, would that be something that like a project design that could then come to correct departments or council for approval for expenditure expenditures and stuff like that?
Yeah. And again, another thing discussed at the Parks Committee was kind of getting the ball rolling and doing a capital improvement plan for all the parks. And that would be, you know, the question parking would be one of those.
That would be huge.
That would, yeah. Yeah. And I think that's, that's, sounds like the appropriate place for it to then kind of come back. And I know that there was project research previously done, and so this will tie into that.
Okay. We did have a good plan a number of years ago. When I got that, I got the $20,000 grant to redo O'Donnell Field. But not much has gone in since. I mean, like regular stuff. I don't mean the city hasn't done stuff, but maybe you should talk to Bura. I was.
Bura's very busy with like, well, yes.
There's lots of work to be done. It's my, you know, experience so far on in this arena. And yeah, I think the resolution seems to me as kind of a step in the right direction. I mean, you know, it doesn't push the ball all the way down the court, but it does seem to push the ball forward. And and for that reason, I guess I would move that we, you know, approve Resolution Number 25 dash.
XX.
Whatever XX.
I think it's 11, but.
Did you want to say any other? Because you were saying.
Well, I mean, I mean, I would, I wouldn't say amend it later necessarily. I mean, I guess we'll kind of see how it goes. If it ends up being sort of more of a burden than we can manage, then that might result in an amendment, but but supplement to that maybe would be the word I would use at the moment. We'll supplement later. As we kind of get back through this ordinance and figure out what the status is there. There even were some things in that ordinance that maybe were appropriate for resolution and not for ordinance too, that we could kind of assess, but but as far as kind of the business at hand, I guess that's my motion.
We have a motion.
Oh, okay. I just want to understand because you're the Parks guy or, you know. Well, no, but what I just thought you said was that we didn't get the ball all the way down the field. But you're feeling this is just a piece of like, so you know, you're going to, now you get this and there'll be another pass to get the ball further down.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, you know, it's part of it too. It'll come along and and maybe there are other things. More work to be done, I guess, is is Cammy mentioned.
This is a good start, Cam.
But it seems like this is, you know, this helps.
I totally agree. I just, when you say more work to be done, not on this, in addition to this.
Yeah, that's it. He's right to see this and supplement this.
Thank you, Sean.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Council Member Bergen.
Yeah.
Council Member Bree.
Yes.
Council Member Mahoney.
Yes.
Council Member Davis.
Yes.
Thank you to the Parks Committee for all your work on this and hopefully this is a good faith movement forward and just an appreciation of everything you've contributed to date. And hope to see more productive stuff come to council later. So thank you very much. And thank you, Brian, for your work on that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item B. Consideration of a fee waiver and or fee reduction for an O'Donnell Park application for a three-day, 12-view baseball league. I have Tiffany's not here, Riza's here. Okay, Riza here, representing the Mavericks. You've got a little bit of a kind of a background on here. And so before I kind of open up for discussion, I want to acknowledge another piece that has come out of the Parks Committee. It did not come in the package yet because it's still a bit of a work in progress, but what we've asked from the Parks Committee is recommendations for when we're looking at fee waivers. Just as kind of grounds for the council to use as a base level for decision-making on fee waivers. So that is being worked on. There are some elements that I'm kind of happy to pick out of here, but some of the recommendations were no waivers for porta potties, no waivers for garbage fees, no waivers for any monetizing activity and no waivers for celebrations, parties, games, sports, et cetera. And fee waivers shall be granted to activities hosted by City Bellevue, city departments or committees or by other taxing districts. And that fee waiver shall be granted to entities which directly partner with the City of Bellevue, city departments or committees or with other taxing districts. And there were some examples in there which we can discuss further if needed, but these, these will be worked out a little further and then brought to council. The resolution just was the priority at this time. So, but that's happening. I'd open the floor for discussion on consideration of the fee waiver for the Mavericks application.
I wasn't that. Obviously, I've come for permits before and even as a nonprofit looking to raise money for the city, I was not authorized and I was told that they are not waiving fees. And I was, because we were not authorized, I had to pay for two days' use of a park. And I, I wasn't sure what the what the direction was. I fully support having activities that the kids should participate in. I love it. But I, I didn't know that we were waiving fees at all. So I'm just sharing that. I hadn't, yeah, I thought that was a policy established this past year. They're not even going to.
It is, hasn't been officially established. I think that councils have, you know, their ways in which they make decisions, but this is this council and it's your opportunity to have a discussion. But I wanted you to be aware that these will be coming before you.
I don't support a waiver of fees. I do support the creatures that show up on my porch and sell me things like wreaths for hockey and and stuff like that. But no, I, I, I don't support the waivers. We have housing insecurity and all funds have to stay on deck.
I'd like Riza raise your hand. I'd like to just give her an opportunity to give a little pitch, but yes.
Sorry. So we asked for either a waiver or a reduction in fees. This past year, when we were at the park last year, we mandated that all of our boys show up at least half an hour to an hour before practice and weed and pick up trash and pick up dog food and, you know, make their park a nice place to be at because you put your own investment into the community. It was back to temple. So this year in particular, our boys have a really awesome opportunity to go play in Cooperstown in New York, which is the Baseball Hall of Fame. And we are fundraising furiously for it. We have to raise another at least $12,000 to $15,000 before our tournament in July to get us there. We've already raised quite a bit of money and obviously all of us parents and, you know, family and friends have pitched in to help us. So we're just asking for at least maybe a half reduction if possible. We spent seven months at least an hour before each practice, which was two times a week. That's at least 60 hours of clean, except what we bought from Idaho Mavericks. We picked up, you know, empty trash cans that were overflowing from previous weekends before. We had a porta potty there that was stolen, thankfully, but by Creek Creek. And, you know, we actually fixed a leak somebody had tampered with the sprinkler that goes under the pitcher's mound. And one of our parents who lives right by O'Donnell Park noticed it on his way to work and fixed it. So that prevented a gigantic mess on the infield, which was great. Great for you, great for us because we had practiced that day. But we spend time raking, you know, doing all the things to keep it really nice looking. So we want to present it as a good baseball field as well. May I make a comment?
I think I'm just going to respond to that really quick. And if you don't feel like it's sufficient. I would love to comment just on the resolution we just passed to clarify that there is an element of maintenance plan. And so I, I appreciate all the work that the Mavericks have done. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, someone from Parks Committee, but part of renting the parks is while the fees, they, they go to kind of the the base level permitting and part of park use and kind of the maintenance from the seasonal players and 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 groups. There is an element of maintenance that is appreciated and that goes into your use of the parks. And then Christina, is there something you want to say?
Well, our fee schedule was literally just covering the porta potties that are required, the garbage pickup that is required the day after any events have taken place and nothing else like. And what I noticed in looking at license plates and just knowing people in these things, they're not necessarily residents of Bellevue. They're residents of Haley, they're residents of the county, they're even coming from Shoshone and Jerome to play in the park. And so as a city taxpayer, I don't feel like I need to pay to have people using the park. Like it is a luxury to be able to play baseball, play soccer, play parks. And also in our 2019 recommendation, there is regular maintenance, maintenance that is done to the park. And so if you want your field to be different, that is your responsibility to maintain it to the state that it needs freedom. The basics are taken care of.
I'm going to just allow Kristen from the Parks Committee to comment really quick. Go ahead.
Oh, yes. I would just say, based on what, Riza?
Riza.
Riza was saying it sounds like maybe more trips to to pick up the trash would be in order from the city's perspective so that you don't have to think about those sorts of things.
It was mostly like leaves, you know, like in fall when the leaves dump, you know, we, we spent a ton of time raking leaves and then we took those away because we didn't want the city to be responsible for that and made a bunch of trash bags.